...of Warner Temple AME Zion Church at 620 Nixon Street. So if you all raise, uh, uh, your seats please for our invocation.
Let us pray. Dear God, our heavenly Father, tonight we invite your presence in this special school board meeting. You are well aware of the issues on the agenda tonight. Many voices have been lifted with passion, sincerity, and great concern for the safety of our students, teachers, parents, administrative staff, and of course, those who work and volunteer in our school system. Dear God, grant each board member tonight wisdom that only comes from you. Wisdom to hear clearly the deliberations that take place tonight. We pray, God, for each board member to hear clearly from you as they make their decisions. God, we pray that you will grant them the wisdom to do what is best for all that are under their care. And dear God, we thank you for the privilege to serve you in this, uh, in this way. And at the end of the day, may you be pleased with the work that we have done tonight. May we get a good night's rest from our efforts. And God would you bless all and each of us as you keep us in the hollow of your hands. In his name we pray. Amen.
May be seated. Thank you very much Reverend Barnett for that rousing invocation for this evening. We appreciate it. All right. Next item on the agenda is old business. And we will start with our COVID-19 vaccine resolution. So this item was placed on the agenda a few days ago. Um, as you all know, today Governor Cooper announced that educators will be moved up in the vaccine schedule, um, as of February 24th. So I have put it to, uh, I have asked, um, we've written a letter, um, to the governor to thank him on behalf of New Hanover County Schools, uh, for putting our educators further up on the schedule. To the board, do we still need to, do you feel send the resolution just as an extra?
Yes, please.
Yes, okay. Still send the resolution in support?
Does it matter?
Yeah.
Is it important? I mean, is it important to do that?
It's.
I think so.
Okay.
Any other thoughts?
I mean, I'll, I'll do it just, uh, you know, so the record is clear that New Hanover County Schools supported that, that motion.
Okay, so the vote is, um, to send a resolution to Governor Cooper requesting that public school employees in group two of the COVID night, or put employees in group two of the COVID-19 vaccination distribution plan. Um, it was included in our packet today. Is there a motion?
No move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
No.
All right. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Motion passes.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
May I ask, um, for someone to turn on the camera, please? The board is not showing on the streaming. Um, it's, it's just the blue screen.
Oh, thank you. Um, can we have a, take a look in the? Just pause for one moment while we work out our technology issues. Ms. Dagnall, are you able to hear us?
Yes, I can hear you, but since we're, you're not doing a roll call, um, vote, it, it's a little disconcerting not to be able to see the board, um, and hear your disembodied voices.
All right.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Can you now, you can see us? All right, thank you. Um, before we move on to the next item, I would like to read the letter that we will be sending to Governor Cooper. Dear Governor Cooper, on behalf of the New Hanover County Board of Education and New Hanover County Schools, educators, bus drivers, child nutrition workers, custodial and administrative staff, and more, I would like to express our sincerest thanks and gratitude for prioritizing educators as frontline workers in the North Carolina Vaccination Distribution Plan. Since day one of the pandemic, public school employees have gone above and beyond to perform their duties heroically in spite of extraordinary challenges. We greatly appreciate that they will be eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine on February 24th, 2021. Like you, the health and education of our children is our top priority. By ensuring that public school employees have access to the vaccine, our school district and districts from across the state will be better prepared to maintain healthy learning environments while bringing students back to in-person instruction. We understand that many North Carolinians are in need of the vaccine and are grateful that you are prioritizing immediate access for frontline workers to this lifesaving tool. Thank you for all that you do for our great state. Sincerely, the Board of Education. We will sign this this evening. Sound good? Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda, COVID-19 updates. And I believe that we are going to welcome back Ms. Carla Turner and Ms. Julie Barnum to the podium, please.
Thank you, thank you again very much for having us. As you said, Governor Cooper did make an announcement today to move, um, teachers and education staff, as well as anyone who works in childcare, um, to the front of group three. And I think it's important to remember that that's anyone in childcare, folks who work K through 12 in the public school system, the charter schools, as well as our private schools. So that's still a sizable group that has been moved up to the first two weeks of group three. And I'd ask you to keep in mind that we continue to get limited amounts of vaccine. But we have been planning, before the announcement today, we've been planning for a couple of weeks how to best move forward with group three in general. So the announcement today allowed us to then hone our plans to determine how best to move forward with this, what I call the subset of group three. So that's kind of where we are. We, we, we've talked with Ms. Barnum. We're working on moving forward. We'll, we'll work with the schools to determine the best way to vaccinate public school staff while also working with private and charter schools, as well as childcare, um, centers to provide the same equitable access to vaccination.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so we'll go through our updates and then, um, Ms. Turner's going to come back with our community information. Okay? So, um, first of all, I want to draw your attention to your packet of information, and that's on the screen for, um, others to see, for our community to see as well. The first section of data would be our confirmed secondary transmissions to date. So, uh, you can see that this is throughout our Plan B, which is October 12th through the end of last week. Our secondary transmission, keep in mind, those are positive cases due to exposure at school. Total's 11. And then we wanted to make sure we can, so we've already broken that down each meeting, uh, according to staff to staff, and that's four. Student to staff is two. Student to student at three, and then staff to student at two. But then breaking that down, elementary, middle, and high school was also important. So you can see that for elementaries, that total of secondary transmission is seven. Middle school is one, and high school is three. Again, those are for the, um, exposures that have happened at school that resulted in a positive. Okay? So in total, 11 COVID cases are, have happened within the schools. That's where, um, those positives have come from. So next, I want to draw your attention to the risk matrix indicators. The way we've identified, and this was a, a collective, um, project with the Health Department, um, thanks to Ms. Turner and, and Mr. Howard providing us with the risk assessment, and then the definitions. So I want to spend a, a minute on those. Moderate risk indicator lets us know that we do have, um, a lower risk of COVID-19 spread in the schools, and that's where we really could be looking at that in-person instruction increase, as long as we are following the required safety and health measures. The elevated indicator really focuses on, um, you know, that there is an increased risk of COVID-19 spread, and that a hybrid instructional model might be the best, best way to reduce that, and reduce the number of individuals in the school building so that we can maintain that additional distancing piece. The high-risk categorization really suggests that higher risk, and really a need to consider whether in-person instruction, um, is even advisable. And I'll go into the matrix next, but I do want to give you a highlight of the information, um, our positives and quarantines. So as we've talked about over the last several months, we're following two-week trends. That gives us a better idea of, um, of course, uh, whether we're moving up or moving down, and just gives us an indicator of where we stand. So over the past 14 days, and again, that's with the week ending on 2/5, so last week, COVID positives totaled 195. Of those 195, 80 of those are elementary, 42 are middle, and 69 were high school. But I wanted to tease out the number that are students versus staff. So of those 80 elementary, 54 are students. Keep in mind, we have about 11,000 elementary students, okay? Middle school positives, uh, 35 are students. We have around 5,500 middle school students, so around 5,500. High school, of the 69, 60 are students. And we have around 8,400, or 8,400 high schoolers. Again, this is two-week data, okay? Now, when we look at quarantines due to exposure at school, we had 312 total. And again, this is that, that, um, collection of students and staff. We're measuring total numbers. So our elementary, we had 88 elementary quarantines in two weeks. 51 of those are students. Middle school, 64 quarantines. 56 of those are students. And at high school, 150 quarantines, and 139 of those are students. And I do want to offer a reminder, one of the reasons, while we're tracking how many of this, how many of these are students versus staff, I want to, I know you guys understand this, but want to remind our community that the reason we can't place a student and staff positive, uh, count on our dashboard separately is because our, our numbers are quite small, and there would be the, um, too close of an ability to violate confidentiality. You would be able to do some ruling out and determine, um, most likely who those individuals are. So we cannot tease out the students and staff. So that's why we have that combined number on the dashboard. And we're doing those things at, um, under the advisement of Public Health. Okay. So as we move to the next, um, looking at the matrix updates, um, this, just to frame this, this is focused on our ability to function as a school system, okay? So this is broken out also by elementary, middle, and high. This was laid out really to try to provide you exactly kind of, um, what you've been looking for in that split data. So if we look at the elementary, and we start with schools with cases, meaning, um, schools with cases of, um, positive diagnosis, right? 27 of our 29 elementary schools have had cases. And again, this is in the past 14 days. Keep in mind, if, what we've learned on the front page, in the past, while we've been operating under Plan B, we see that seven elementary cases came from school. So, but we know we've had hundreds of cases, so they're not coming within the school setting. They're not originating in the school setting overall. So overall, we have COVID in nearly all of our schools. We're able to manage the exposures, and we've had seven in, since, uh, October 12th. So 27 of 29 elementary schools do have cases, um, over the past 14 days. Now, when you move to the next, schools with quarantined individuals, and this is, um, talking about a number greater than 25, and that is zero. We don't have any elementary schools that have had greater than 25. We do expect high quarantine numbers if we do move into a different plan, however, because quarantines will happen more. We don't necessarily expect higher, um, transmission, but we have to be prepared for that. We definitely expect higher quarantine numbers. So moving to the next, again, still focusing on elementary, cases in a school. So this is where we focus on, um, the number of students and staff at a specific school who've tested positive within the last 14 days. We have five schools that fall in that moderate range of zero to one. And we also know, because we know from the top, 27 of 29, so we know we have two schools with zero. So of those five schools, two of those have zero, and three have one. And then the rest of our elementary schools fall in that elevated, with between two and 10 cases. School clusters, we remain at zero. And that's over the past 28 days, but we've also not had any elementary clusters. Individuals in active quarantine, and this again is based on school exposure. 28 of our 29 schools are in the moderate range with less than 15 in active quarantine. One school in the past 14 days did have between 15 and 30, either a combined student and staff count in quarantine. Okay? Middle school. As we measure our middle schools with at least one positive case, all seven of them have had at least one positive case in 14 days. When we look at the number of quarantined individuals, and again, we're measuring at 25 over the past 14 days, so 25 individuals in quarantine over the past 14 days. And again, this is based on exposure at school, not general community exposure. This is not because I have a sister who's symptomatic, or my cousin tested positive. This is exposure at school. One of our seven middle schools, um, had greater than 25 individuals, or at least 25 individuals. And that is related to athletics. Okay? So as we move to the bottom, and let's look at where our schools fall. When we look at the number of students and staff at a specific school who have tested positive, one of our schools falls in the zero to one. We know that's one, because they've all had a case. And then the remaining six of our middle schools fall in that two to 10 range, having between two and 10 individuals test positive, again, in 14 days. Zero school clusters, we have had no middle school clusters the entire time. And then our individuals in active quarantine, every one of our schools is less than 15. Okay? Again, quarantine from exposure at school. All right. High school. So as we know, our high schools are very different across the board. We have four traditional high schools. We have a couple of early colleges, our, um, Southeast Area Technical High School, Mosley, and J.C. Rose. So we have nine in total. So when we look at schools with cases, six of our nine high schools have had at least one positive case. And when we look at schools with quarantined individuals, greater than 25 individuals in 14 days who have been quarantined due to exposure at school, all four of our traditional high schools. But keep in mind, our four traditional high schools have about 7,600 kids in total. Okay? So a good chunk of our student population in those four traditionals. So when we move down, cases in a school, and as we look at the number of students and staff at a specific school, zero to one, uh, three of our schools have zero to one. Well, we know that that's zero, because six of nine have had cases, meaning three don't. So those three have zero in the last 14 days. The other six of our schools have had between two and 10 cases. Still, no clusters. We remain at only one cluster in, in all of Plan B, and that was in October in one of our traditional high schools. And then for high school, individuals in active quarantine, again, due to exposure at school, we have five of our high schools fall in that less than 15. And then our four traditional high schools do fall in that greater than 30. Again, related to, many are related to athletics. Many. And so the last page is that combined, basically that workforce assessment. And again, um, helping understand our ability to operate as a system. Uh, and this is no change from our last meeting. Uh, we still are, um, in the moderate for child nutrition, transportation, and custodial. We have found ourselves in the elevated. With nursing, we are in the high. We discussed in our last meeting that, you know, a lot of that is impacted and may not continue to be impacted, but has been impacted by vaccine clinics and having our nurses kind of being, doing, you know, doing double duty, um, which we understand that. This is a health crisis. We, they need to be utilized in that way, um, to really help us get where, help our community get where we need to be. Uh, instructional staff, we are still operating in the moderate. And then with infection control and PPE supplies in the moderate. Uh, we're in pretty good shape under those, even though, you know, there might be some difficulty with, um, class coverage, we're still operating above that, um, 94% range, or greater than 94%. So 95 and above. I want to focus here just a second on that instructional staff component. Uh, we've taken an additional measure to support, uh, the workforce, um, among our staff and the protection of the workforce, and, um, have really worked with our school administrators and directors to support staff in not having face-to-face meetings, even in the building together. So team meetings not happening in a classroom where folks come together, staff meetings, that kind of thing. Whenever, uh, absolutely possible, having any kind of meeting virtually or on Zoom is going to be preferable, so that there are not unnecessary quarantines. There are some types of, um, activities that cannot be virtual, though. Co-teaching, if, if more than one teacher needs to be in a classroom serving students, that's completely understandable. They need to go about school as they need to go about school. Keep doing the business of school. But, um, if you can have a virtual team meeting as opposed to meeting in a classroom, and yes, thinking you're six feet apart, but then when it comes down to it and somebody has, has come up positive, and you're like, was I really six feet? Was I five feet, 10 inches? I'm not sure. And, you know, many, I will say, many of our quarantines are out of an abundance of caution, may not actually fall within that six feet. I have conversations with many staff who say, I'm not sure what six feet really is. You know, how does that, how do I know how that feels all the time? So I do want to mention that, um, we are, we're really trying to support our schools and our staff in, um, having more protective options for meeting. And I'm going to turn it back over to Ms. Turner to go over our community data. And then I've got one more piece after that for you.
And I will tell you, our data hasn't changed a whole lot since I talked to you last Tuesday evening on February the 2nd. So, um, since this all began on March 19th of 2020, we have had a total of 14,714 positive cases in New Hanover County. Of those, uh, those last 11 months, uh, 345 of those cases fell into the five to 10 age group, as well as 833 in 11 to 17. So you can see those percentages. Now, I pulled data, and I, I made an error on this next one, it's active cases from February 3rd till today. I pulled it, uh, this afternoon. So a week's worth of data. So we had, in the last week, we've had 38 new cases of five to 10, and we've had 71 new cases of 11 to 17. And then I put the other age groups on there because they fall into your, your teachers and your educational support staff. And I will point out, it, in the last week, there's been 149 cases amongst the 50 to 64 age range. And Ms. Barnum, I'm thinking about 45% of your, that we determined staff falls into over 50, around 40, 45% falls in the over 50. So that's why I included that last category. So this is kind of where we have been in the last week. And again, whereas Ms. Barnum has your specific school, in-school student numbers, what these are is this age group throughout the county. Some of them may be completely Plan C, some of them may be, um, charter schools, some of them may be private schools. So they're not all New Hanover County school students, but I, we don't have that broken up in our dashboard. And I did want to just let you know that I did this afternoon, signed the final little piece of paperwork we have to have to bring our 41st school nurse onboard. So hallelujah, we're going to be fully staffed, and we are as excited about that as we can possibly be. So, yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
I, I know that, um, as a county, I believe we've gone into the orange, we've come out of the red.
We did, we came down a level, yes, ma'am.
Can you speak to our trends of where we are right now?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Our trends, our positivity trends, hospitalization trends?
They are, they are, I will tell you, the, the numbers of folks hospitalized right now at New Hanover Regional, um, have come down. Um, and keeping in mind, uh, New Hanover Regional is just that, a regional hospital. So the people who are in New Hanover Regional with COVID are not all New Hanover County residents. It's about a five or six county, um, parameter. So, but those numbers are coming down, um, which is very encouraging to us. Our percent positivity is starting to come down. I didn't, the county level data did not come out today, so I can't give you where we are right now, but that's the reason we dropped from red to orange, which is great, because our, uh, percent positive rate fell below 10%. So we're going in the right direction. We've got to keep doing what we're doing. We're continuing to vaccinate. We got more vaccine this week, so we're continuing to focus on groups one and two. Uh, we'll be doing vaccination clinics tomorrow and Friday. Uh, so we're working on that. So just, it's a, it's slow and steady wins the race. It's just, it's going to take a while to get to where we need to get.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Justice?
Uh, yes, could you explain how you get to the positivity rate in the county? Where the statistic comes from? Who's reporting, I guess, is, could you just explain it?
It, the percent positivity is how many positive tests we get based on the total number of people who are tested, and it's based on people who live in New Hanover County. We have lots of people who come from surrounding counties to be tested, but our percent positivity is going to be based on New Hanover County residents. And so those who are positive compared to the entire, uh, amount of folks who've been tested.
Well, are people being tested that aren't necessarily ill? Is there another reason?
We have people who test before they travel.
Okay.
And that type of thing. So there are folks who are not symptomatic who, who do get tested. Now, some of those who aren't symptomatic are close contacts to a positive, and we do encourage them to be tested five days after their last exposure, because it takes between five and seven days potentially to have enough viral load in your system to register a positive test. And sometimes it takes that long for symptoms to show up. But yes, we do have people who, um, are testing for other reasons.
Like for possibly hospital procedures before they go in?
I think there are, I think many hospitals do require that. I can't speak specifically to New Hanover Regional. I know, uh, in the past, I know UNC hospitals and Duke have, have required that before they show up, yes.
So the positivity rate is not necessarily, and there's a lot of healthy people that are taking tests for, without symptoms.
Well, yeah, and I, I don't know that, I, I don't, and I don't know the percentage of those people who are testing are, are people who wouldn't fall into a normal testing category. The only folks we test through Public Health are, they've had to fall into a specific category because we send it to the state lab, so they have to be symptomatic or a close contact to a positive. So what we're doing is folks who would.
Is what you're doing, with the other tests that you're getting.
But I can't speak to the other many places in the community that are, are doing that, yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Turner, um, real, real quickly, um, know, you know, a lot of people, when they see something about a quarantine, or, or understandably frightened, um, you know, I don't think quarantines are, uh, you know, reason to panic. I think they're evidence of due diligence on the part of our Health Department. Could you just quickly explain the parameters and criteria under which somebody would be asked to quarantine, and maybe even just a little bit of why quarantined individuals report low positivity?
Exactly. Um, so you have isolation and you have quarantine. Isolation is when you're sick. Quarantine is when you're well. So if you test positive, we ask you to isolate until you qualify as recovered, which would be 10 days past your symptom onset, with, with your symptoms beginning to resolve and no fever for 24 hours. Now quarantine means we just want you to separate yourself from people. You are well. We want you to separate yourself from people just in case you have been exposed, and your body is working to become positive. That way, you're not exposing anyone else. So it's the best way to keep you safe, as well as those folks around you safe. Does that answer your question?
Thank you. I, I have a question, please. Um, UNCW is going to start testing their students once a week, and grad students every other week. Are you incorporating that in your numbers, or is that a separate, completely separate number?
Um, if they are living in New Hanover County, they count in our numbers.
Through the Health Department as well? Or that?
I'm sorry, what?
Does it go through the Health Department as well? I mean, because you guys are doing each other.
No, UNCW, UNCW does that testing through their student health services, and then they send their information to the state as, as well as to us. We get a daily report from them.
You will incorporate that into the county numbers?
Yes, ma'am. If they are living, for 10 months, they're, they're ours. You know, while they're, while they're here, they're going to count in our numbers. And I, and I would like to say, we are working with a, another, uh, vendor, uh, through the state to provide additional testing in the community, so we, like we did with UNCW several months ago. So we're partnering again, so there'll be additional testing available in the community for people who potentially have been exposed.
Do you see that expanding here? I think that's been one of the big, big barriers is, is testing. Like we can't, you know, you know, some of the universities are able to test their students, even if they're symptomatic or not, they do it just to find out what the population is doing, and it's a measure to kind of keep an eye on whether or not they should pull back or whatever.
Yeah, and I, and I certainly can't speak for UNCW, but the, the thought is that if, if they're able to test and determine what's going on, it helps them make much more informed decisions as far as bringing the students back on campus for class.
We couldn't do that program, right? I know, um, Stephanie was asking you guys about that state program that we, we could have probably been a part of, like a pilot program to get testing in the schools.
There was a pilot program through K-12, and we, uh, had conversations with Ms. Barnum and the school system, and just from a capacity standpoint, we weren't ready to move forward with that. And we're going to kind of watch and see how it goes in the other pilot counties to determine if it's something we want to look at doing in the future.
Okay, it would definitely help.
Ms. Grabham?
Is this an appropriate time to ask? If you, if you have, if you can tell us anything about, um, how a teacher rollout might look, um, vaccine rollout for New Hanover County Schools, like at a site that we could all go to, or, you know, in. know, in the schools or is it premature for that or have you given some of that thought?
You are welcome to ask me whatever you want. My answer to you will be, my answer to you is that we are working on plans on how best to roll it out to the folks who fall into that subset. We are certainly going to work really closely with Ms. Varnum as well as Dr. Faust and the rest of our principals to figure the best way to roll this out to your staff. But I do have to ask you to keep in mind that it's more than just the public school system. But yes, we are, we are certainly working hard to determine the best way to take care of as many people as we can as quickly as we can.
And I guess you guys are keeping in mind that our teachers work during the day so they wouldn't be able to get a daily appointment?
We're, we're looking at-
Or something?
We're looking at potential sites that would be throughout the county, that would allow equal access throughout the county, no matter where you teach. And we're also looking potentially at days when students aren't in school. So to make it as easy as possible for people to get in and get their vaccine. And at the health department, when we're having our clinic in our, at our HHS building, we run it till seven o'clock at night for people who work till five. Because we understand people, not everybody can just hop up and leave work at two o'clock in the afternoon. So we are certainly prepared to address that as well, yes ma'am.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And to clarify, that date is February twenty-fourth.
February twenty-fourth is when it starts, the twenty-fourth through March tenth. Is that two-week timeframe, yes.
Thank you very much. All right, Ms. Varnum, you said you have anything else left? Thank you, Ms. Turner.
Yes, I wanted to reference the last page in your packet, the strong schools NC, what we're learning about children in COVID-19. This was just updated last week. And just to give you a little bit more information that I was sharing in the last meeting with some of the preventive measures that are successful for in-person learning, so this is just a resource for you. And then I know there's been a question, I wanted to reference quarantines again. I know there's been a question of us kind of identifying the timelines of folks in quarantine. We can identify the timelines for folks in quarantine based on school exposure, but quarantines for out-of-school exposure is a self-report and unverified means, and we don't have those timelines. So we're calculating quarantines of, and absence rates, when we look at the last page of our matrix where we've got the part about ninety percent of our child, over ninety percent of our child nutrition staff, and we're looking at the elevated range for transportation and custodial. Please know that the quarantines fall into those calculations, all quarantines, not just exposure at school. We're calculating all absence rates in this one. So this-
This last page?
This last page. This calculates including absence rates and quarantines from exposure at school. So this is where that answers that. We might not be able to identify the timelines because it's self-report, we are capturing the trends in our workforce that includes those out of, those community quarantines. Okay? Yes. I'm sorry.
Yes, Ms. Justice?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I answered and I'm-
As far as, as far as students reporting that they have COVID, is this self-reporting from their families?
It does start that way because we're not, we don't have a monitor nor should we on the lab list, but it does start that way that families report in to our school nurse or to our staff, and then our school nurse begins the contact tracing in the school setting. Might there be some that aren't communicated to us? Absolutely. But we do not, we require, or we, let me, let me rephrase that. We rely on self-report of families to let us know about student positives and on our staff to report theirs.
So that's the only way that we know for sure is we've come in-
Right, we have to rely on that. We do.
Can I ask one follow-up question to what you did? What I had asked Ms. Varnum was could she identify the number of people that were out of our building at any point, a number of adults that were out of our building at any point in time? So do you have any general numbers of, when you said absentee rates, that, I mean, I'm having a little bit of her time figuring out the actual picture from the percentages? Like, do we have at the high school level on an average of the past fourteen days, we have twenty people out of our buildings? Or, I mean, I'm just, I'm throwing that number out as an average, I mean, as just a whipping something out.
I'm going to, I'm going to go to my, as Dr. Smith calls it, my Wayback book. She goes in her Wayback machine and finds things from the past. I do have information, actually.
And then, you know, the reason I'm asking the question is to make sure we have coverage in our buildings to actually teach our kids.
Right. So I will just let you know how we calculated. So our partners in human resources have been working with us on the, the numbers of our instructional staff that have been absent and the numbers needing coverage. And we know that we have kind of that magic number of positions that if they are unmanned, we kind of, that's when we kind of fold. And so that really is our greater than ninety-four percent range. So we're calculating our absences, COVID or not, because when it comes to our ability to continue to function, it doesn't matter why someone is out sick. It matters that, that we have a trend of being out sick or being out for some reason. So we calculated that with human resources. Now, when it comes to child nutrition, transportation, and custodial, Mr. Anderson and I worked together, and that's why these are the same numbers from our last board meeting, we worked together to calculate that over the past timeframe to look at what is our percentage of absence? And then how many, how many, for example, how many bus routes were having to be doubled up or how many drivers were out there for how many bus routes were impacted? And then that was our percentage based on the number of bus routes. And the same thing with cafeteria and child nutrition, knowing that if we've got a full staff to be able to operate there or if we're having to borrow staff from other places. So we did, we did calculate it in that way. The raw numbers, I thought I had with me, but I don't have all of my Wayback machine right here.
That's okay.
Yeah, but that's how it is calculated.
All right.
So is this the part of the presentation where we ask questions about substitute coverage or specifically? Or is Dr. Coker going to speak later? I don't want to jump the gun. I can wait my turn or await the order.
We did not, we did not have a presentation for substitutes lined up, but I'm, Dr. Coker, are you able to respond to subs? I know we talked about one-seventy-four at the last meeting, I think. I apologize for putting you on the spot like this, sorry.
Good evening. Yes, at the last board meeting, we had a hundred and seventy-four active substitutes. We have two hundred active substitutes now.
Okay. Great. Thank you to our community.
So, and those subs are the ones that are committed to being here in Plan A?
So we did a survey and we had a hundred and ninety-eight people to complete the survey. A hundred of the, a hundred and three of those said yes, that they would return under Plan A.
Okay, so our number really, if we're going to go to Plan A, then our number is really kind of a hundred and three.
It's difficult, it's difficult to say that because not everybody who didn't complete the survey is not active. You know, so some people who completed this, some people who didn't complete the survey may have just blown the survey off, but they're actually active. And we have two hundred active, and we've hired more since we've administered the survey.
Okay.
Yeah, and then the other part to that would be, it would have to be a given day where there's a hundred and plus people that are out.
Across the system?
Because you may have high school where they may have twelve and so it would have to be collectively, so when she's saying the ninety-eight or whatever, that, it, it's hard to tell because of whatever the situation is. So that's almost a hard question to respond to accurately, but-
I think it's important to know because if we do go into a Plan A and we don't have enough people to cover classes, that's going to cause a loss of learning, perhaps. We'll go into things like what's happening in Brunswick County with schools. I mean, we want to keep the learning, but if there's nobody there physically to be in the classroom, I don't know how it will work.
Absolutely. So on any given day, the substitute, of course, substitutes decide whether they are going to accept a job or not accept a job. So it is hard to say for sure what each person will do on any given day. But right now, we have two hundred subs who are actively working.
Ms. Justice, did you have a, Mr. McManus, I'm sorry, Ms. Justice, not Mr. McManus.
Well, let him bring it first.
Okay, okay.
What percent, as a weekly average or monthly average, however you put it together, what's the percent of substitutes per day?
That varies on day to day. I don't have a percent of subs on a particular day, but I can tell you that-
Typically on Mondays and Fridays.
It varies from day to day depending on the number of absences. You know, and our fill rate, I can tell you that our sub fill rate, you know, can go at ninety percent, some days it's eighty-six percent. So that percentage of the positions or subs that are filled, the positions that are filled with substitute varies. Principals also are very creative and use staff also when, when there's a need.
Teacher assistance?
Teacher assistance, yes, sir.
Could I ask a question off of that? Do you know what the percentages are of teacher assistants that are certified? You know, I know that, you know, when I was a principal, we had a lot of teacher assistants, actually certified teachers that chose not to be teachers or were trying to get in the system.
I do not have that number, but I can get that for you.
Okay, great, thanks.
And I would, I would just like to say, thank you, Dr. Coker, for answering these questions. We didn't, we didn't provide this information up on the front end to ask about this. So we appreciate that you're entertaining these questions and appreciate how much information you do have at the tip of your fingers. Ms. Justice?
Normally, you said you have two hundred subs and you just started, you know, the last month, and thank you very much, you're doing a great job. Normally, how many subs do we have on average during a regular year minus COVID? You know, do you know? I know, I know you're new to the system, but what would-
The number of subs that we have on an average year?
Well, average, say, day to day on an average year, yeah.
Before COVID?
Before COVID. How many on the list? How's that sound? How many on the list?
So we have a total of four hundred and eleven on the list now. The last time I reported, we had a total of three hundred and ninety-nine on the list, but how that compares to previous years, I would have to research that.
Well, now, you're telling me this is how much you have subs on the list and you're saying that right now you have two hundred that, as of today, those, are those the ones people are actively calling? What's going on with the other two hundred? I'm just-
They have not accepted jobs. So when jobs, yeah, right, those have not accepted jobs.
So normally you have four hundred, and right now you've only got two hundred accepting jobs?
Two hundred are actively working.
Oh, so that's a big difference.
Yeah.
Thank you, by the way.
You're welcome.
Wow.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Coker, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Coker.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, Ms. Varnum, was there anything else for you?
Unless there are questions.
Any other questions for Ms. Varnum before we move on?
Can I ask one more question about your, the numbers of, do you know approximately how many of our kids of the eleven thousand elementary, how many are actually participating in the A, A, B, B part of that?
I can tease that out, but the number-
I mean, is it half or is it less than half or?
I'm going to look at my colleague over here. You don't have that. So I don't have the exact or even close to those numbers. I do not believe it's, it's half and half, but-
I didn't think it was, but I would shoot you.
Right, right. But again, these, right, again, these totals don't necessarily, are not just of the kids that are face-to-face either. These could, the COVID positives and the COVID quarantines could be, right.
I was just trying to get a handle on the percentage of actual kids in our buildings.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Varnum.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to our next item, transition to Plan A. So at our last board meeting on Tuesday, the governor had a meeting about three hours before our meeting and stood with other top state leaders and urged K-12 school districts across the state to allow in-person instruction for all students. We obviously did not have it on our agenda that evening to discuss. We were discussing COVID-19 updates. We made the decision as a board to come back. The will of the board was to come back a week later to revisit and have a conversation. So I would like to open the floor to some discussion, also in light of the information today about educators being moved up into the vaccine schedule. Thoughts of board members as far as a transition to Plan A possibility for New Hanover County schools? Who would like to start?
Madam Chair, I'd like to recommend, as we did last time, that everybody speak first for however long they'd like to speak and then we can elaborate on that discussion. But I thought it was a good way to begin a difficult conversation.
Can we quantify that with not as long as they want to speak?
No, it's quantify that.
Because we might be here till eleven. How about, how about three minutes? If you'd like to share your thoughts for about three to five minutes?
Like an opening-type thing?
Just your thoughts on transition to Plan A. Would you like to start, Ms. Justice? We'll come down.
I almost have too many thoughts. First of all, the governor's announcement was related to all the schools in the state and there was something like fifty-two percent of them at the time were still in Plan C. We actually, even with the Senate bill that they're putting through right now, and I think most people in the room are familiar with that, we are actually in compliance with what the governor asked for. He said the hybrid model was perfectly fine and that's one of the reasons that I think we are doing so well. We went into the hybrid model, I think it was in September, October, and it sounded really sensible then, and I'm very pleased with the outcomes when you look at the surrounding counties. For example, you look down at Brunswick County, they just announced again today that they're closing another elementary school to remote. And that's five now, one of them's a charter school that they've had to do because they've been under Plan A. I'm always going to think about safety first. I really appreciated the information that they shared. I'm very concerned about the sub situation. I have been in the schools. I firmly believe we should be following the CDC guidelines, going to individual schools. Now, a couple of the schools are newer, they got a lot more space, that's great, but a lot of our schools don't. And when you stand, and I go and I stand in those classrooms like a teacher would, and I look and see what I'm seeing, I'm talking about the elementary schools right now, and there is no way in heck you can even keep them three feet apart. And then there's a consideration of the class caps. The smaller, the lower grades have caps, but you get to the fourth and fifth grade, I think it's twenty-five. And, and you can't put them in those rooms. They're maybe a foot apart, not even that in some cases, facing the teacher with a desk, and that's with everything taken out. That scares me. On top of that, we will be providing, and we should, providing the remote learning. In order to do that consistently without overwhelming people, what we need to do is take a teacher from each grade level. I've talked to teachers, I've talked to administrators, and that's just the way you have to do it. And that means that those kids in those classes that the teachers normally would have on their roster are going to be put, split up into other classes at the grade levels. And that means not only they're going to have twenty-five, you've got some classes now with thirty kids in them, very small areas. I know you're over here shaking your head, but I walked in there, I talked to people, not just one school, but several, and I know with the different sizes in the schools, and we've all been hearing from teachers. And it's very hard for me to see how we can follow the CDC requirements. And they say the minimum three, they prefer the six. That's why we've done so well? And when I see that, it scares me. Because the teachers, I mean, the teachers are literally shoved to the front of the rooms in order to try to even separate the desks two feet apart, three feet apart. It's going to be hard, really hard. And so, I, as I said, I think what we did starting out was great, that we've done that because it's allowed two days a week for the kids to come to school. I have, I have a high school student and elementary school student in my house. They love going to school those two days. It's really fulfilled their social, emotional needs. It's hard, they have regressed. I think every kid in this country probably has to a certain extent, except the ones that are lucky enough not to have that, that particular normality. But it is meeting a lot of the things that we require, and the kids are in school, as the governor said. The CDC requirements are coming out this week, the new ones that the Biden administration is, has studied and is putting in place. And this afternoon, I read that they're not gonna probably be out until Friday, news media's saying, but they have looked at the new requirements, and they're very much like the old ones. In fact, one thing they constantly emphasize is as long as you keep the hand washing, the sanitizing, and the distancing, they're gonna keep that in place. And they said that's how you mitigate the spread. We're so close to the vaccines. We're talking about maybe a month, month and a half before our teachers will feel comfortable and safe. This is something we really need to consider. I'm so glad the governor today said that they're moving up there. So, I mean, as I said, I have a lot to say, I could say more, but I'm gonna follow, I'm gonna stick with the CDC requirements. I love what Ms. Barnum said today, one of the reasons that our numbers are not going to increase, or haven't increased yet, was because we are in Plan B. It mitigates the fear, you know, for the crowds. So, I'm, as I said, I'm gonna stick with the CDC recommendations. There are a couple other ideas, though, I really do want the kids in school, and I've talked to some other members about some ideas they have, and they're really good. So, at some point, they want to share them, that's fine. Because I've done some research on that, too.
Ms. Justice, that's four minutes and 30 seconds. Is there anything else?
Pardon?
That's four minutes and 30 seconds.
Oh, that's fine. I, I mean, I could go on, but, you know, as I said, I can care very much about keeping people safe.
Mr. McManus? We'll come down the line.
I'm gonna pass, and maybe come back.
You wanna come back? All right. Anybody would like to? Ms. Crable, would you like to go next?
Yeah, I'll jump in. So, been doing a lot of talking, you know, thinking, talking to myself, talking to, you know, central office, and I want to thank you, first of all, for answering, you know, all my questions that I send to Dr. Faust, and I know he sends to you, and so, I'm probably on your block list, but, um, um, thank you for, you know, being prepared at all these meetings and doing your best to assuage all my fears and my concerns. And many of those are shared with parents and teachers, so I'm not talking in a vacuum, I don't, I don't think. But, um, so, one of the things that I have kept coming back to is, I don't know if any of you are familiar with the Maslow's, you know, hierarchy of needs pyramid? And basic safety needs, you know, have to be met before we can actually go anywhere and accomplish all of our results. And so, we have, in my, in my analysis, we have two sets of safety needs, that we have our, our staff and we have our students. So, which is more important? Neither is more important, they're both equally as important. So, you have to weigh those out and figure out what kind of strategies can we put in place that will mitigate some of the, either get rid of them or reduce them to the extent that possible. So, I was, wanted to let everybody know that I read every one of the emails I get, and I'm telling you what, we, we get a lot. And the sheer volume doesn't really sway my decision. The, the language that we, that we get, you know, sometimes does sway my decision, so I'm giving everybody a COVID pass on heightened emotions and some of the things they say that aren't quite, you know, kind when they're trying to prove their point. But one email that I read recently, somebody reminded me that I said, when I was running for office, that all children can and want to learn, so we must meet them where they are with appropriate teaching strategies and resources to make their dream a reality. So, that's important, and so, but we, again, we can't teach them if our teachers aren't there to teach, so gotta weigh that. But I did sit in on a good conversation with a, the Partnership and Community Engagement Forum at Watson on Wednesday, today, and Brian Brinkley, who's the director of the Education Lab, made a good point, and he said, "We teach teachers to be good teachers, no matter where they are, no matter how, no matter what it takes." And so, I started thinking that our teachers can do this, and I am just hoping, I'm not even hoping, I, I'm expecting, and I'm, and I know it's gonna happen, that we will perhaps survey our teachers and our principals, not me, because that's not my job. We can see what are the major things that are bothering teachers and, and staff and parents, and we can probably fix most of those. Some of the distancing may not be possible in the classroom you're in, but we may have other strategies to move them around the building, or Riceville Beach sent kids to, you know, a church down the road. So, there are other things I think we can look at, and again, that's what, you know, we have Dr. Faust for and the staff over here for. So, that's just, I, I just wanted everybody to know that we are listening, I am listening, and I'm really trying to process. So, that's what happened.
Thank you. Mr. Boyer?
Yeah, you're not gonna believe that somebody asked me today, told me at a special meeting, and they said, "Man, y'all ask a lot of questions." And they said, "Why?" I thought about it a lot on the way over here, I said, "Well, two reasons. One is, we care. Every one of us up here is a, we're all passionate people, we all care." I'm definitely honored to share the dius with every one of you, because I know you care. When it's contentious, when it's harmonious, we all care. And the other reason I think we ask so many questions is, you know, me personally, here's what I want, I want Ms. Barnum, I want Dr. Turner, Carla Turner, Ms. Turner, I'd like somebody to come up here and give me an answer that is 100% certain, that is going to make me melt, but is going to make me feel so safe. And it's not there. It's not gonna be there, because we know that there are going to be struggles, we know that subs are going to be difficult to fill, we know, we know all of this, we know we might have to quarantine schools, we, we understand that. Because we can quantify all of that, but here's what we can't quantify. We can't quantify the pain that 20 days in school over the past 10 months is doing to our youngest learners. We can't quantify that. We don't have that data. You know, I, I just think that that pain is real, it's substantial. I, you know, I, I erred on one side for so long, and, you know, I think it's time that these kids get back to school. I think it's just so, so needed. I worry about them like you all do every single day, and, you know, that's where I've come out on this. I'm ready to put our children back in school, and I want them to know that. I want them to know that, you know, help is coming.
Thank you. Ms. Walker?
Are we getting timed again?
I'm just, yeah, I'm just, yeah.
Well, I'm trying to cut them off, too. I'll try, I'll make it brief. First thing I'm gonna say is, believe it or not, we, we, we all heard parents on both sides of this issue, parents, teachers, administrators, like, it's not just one opinion or both, everyone's got one, and they're all just as important. So, I just wanna put that out there, too. But the sticking point I have is the safety issue. We are at the darkest point of this COVID thing right now. We got vaccines on the way, we got warmer weather, we've got all these things that are getting ready to happen, but we still can't lose sight of the fact that, you know, if we can't, we can't provide CDC rules to mitigate these, the spread of this virus, we can't, and that's one other thing we can't predict, is who will get sick, who will, who will, God forbid, die, or whatever will happen, we can't predict that, and that's for children and that's for teachers, so, and staff. So, we, we can't just ignore that fact. We are in the dark days of COVID. We are in the dark days of COVID, and I'm hoping that's gonna be gone soon. And I don't think anybody here does not want every kid in school, you know, and as a kid that had a hard time herself as a kid, I understand what pain and what depression is. So, I've overcome it, and I know children are strong and resilient. So, I just wanna say that, too. But, you know, I don't feel good about putting two to three kids on a school bus, whether it's 15 minutes or more, I don't feel good about having kids too close. And I have heard from administrators, I've heard from teachers, too, and there is real fear out there, but help is on the way. So, I don't know, I mean, I'm open to creative ways to do this safely, but we gotta talk about it. I mean, there's gotta be ways we can do it safely, and that's the thing I'm uncomfortable about, is saying, "Let's just open the doors," when we're in the middle of a pandemic, that we've never, ever experienced in our lives. I mean, the last time was 100 years ago, and we just can't lose sight of that. And I just feel like, I feel like kids need stability and consistency in their lives, and I'm, I'm nervous we open the doors, then we're gonna have what just happened in Brunswick County. And I've heard that they don't, you know, when, when you're quarantined for two weeks, you don't get instruction, you get a packet. That's not learning either, and I just, I mean, I have to think about these things. It's not as simple as saying, you know, I feel for the kids. I feel for everybody here. At the same time, it's, it's a safety issue, and I can't get away from that if we can't distance properly, and that's what bothers me, so, done.
Thank you. Mr. Wildabore?
Well, I thought long and hard about what I was gonna say, written down a couple things. And first, I'd like to thank my colleagues. Talked to every one of you and shared and cried with at least one of you. And I've talked to a lot of the smartest people I know, and talked to them the last couple of days. We prayed, actually, I have somebody pray with me today, we've talked about how important school is. And I just think back to something I've said to many of my colleagues when I was principal and sister principal, that school might be the best and safest place for children to be. Either I'm a hypocrite or I'm not, and I don't feel like I am. I think I've been to just about every single elementary school, I've talked to principals, I've talked to teachers. For the most part, I've heard nothing but, "We want our kids back, we want our kids back, we want our kids back." When I was running, one of the things I talked a lot about was, as a former principal of an elementary school, how in the world do you take a kindergartner that's never been to school or only been to school a little bit, and give him an iPad and say, "Good luck to you." And I know our teachers are working extremely, extremely hard. We have some great teachers that are trying innovative ways to, to teach their, their students. On the other hand, I do agree, you know, buses, I mean, I, I'm gonna throw it out one more time, I know, you know, the, the whole idea of finding any way. You know, I, I'd like to talk to, you know, Mr. Anderson again about the far view, because I think that would help keep our students safe on the bus. I'm, I'm with Ms. Walker, I'm concerned about, you know, two students or possibly three students in a seat. So, we come down to a simple, and it's not simple at all, it's a very, very difficult decision between safety, all safety for all our students, for our teachers. You know, my wife was a teacher all her life, I was, I'm still, you know, we're still teachers. So, it is important to keep our, our staff and our students all safe. I think back to something that's in the Bible, and it's actually, perm is coming up very soon, which is a Hebrew holiday, and they, and they, they looked at Queen Esther, Mordecai looked at Queen Esther and said, "For such a time as this, that's why you were put here." And I think that's why each, every, and every person at this table was put here, "For such a time as this." This is a difficult time, there's been a lot of, a lot of tears, you know, for those. I've read every single email, I started to respond to all the emails, and I said, "I can do better just to read them all." So, I've read every email, and as has been said, you know, that we get a lot of folks that say, "Please, please, please, Plan A," and we have a lot of people, "Please, please, please, Plan B." And they're all, they're all valid arguments, they really are. But the bottom line is, we're educators, we need to educate our students. That's where I'm gonna end. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wildabore. Mr. McManus?
This is, I guess I'm gonna ramble for a few minutes, I just, I've tried to rethink, I wanted to listen to everybody. And, and I'm known as a talker, so I'm trying to learn to be a better listener. Obviously, this is a divisional and somewhat political arena, it should not be. I never dreamed that I'd have to vote and automatically alienate half of this community, and maybe not even gain a plus for the other half, it's, it's not funny. One of my comparisons, which I've said to some people, felt like Mel Gibson, if you've ever seen Braveheart, I actually responded to some of you with that email, it's the lack, or it's the guillotine, and that's not to be funny. This is a very emotional group up here, and we have vacillated, we have read, we, I read every single email. If you cuss at me, I don't respond, I still read it. If you call me names, I don't respond. Sending one every single day doesn't help, but I read them, I promise I read them. I've read everything that you've added, every attachment, most of you send it. They're experts everywhere, you can find a psychiatrist, a psychologist, a treatment center, CEO, congressional leaders, North Carolina Journal Assembly, county commissioners, everyone has someone who'll defend their side. That makes it even more difficult. Whatever the vote tonight, I think there are a couple things that I have to say, regardless of the vote. I will hope that we get some financial support, if we can't afford it, to put the very best filters in every single classroom. And I know that Mr. Anderson's worked with the circulation, but this is just an added plus, hopefully, to make people feel safer. Twice I voted to delay going back into school, and I see tonight, and I keep thinking, I made my living working with kids first. It's time for me to do what's best for the kids. I truly believe that the kids are in a very difficult position. I have read, I've talked, I've listened, I have listened. These kids need to be in a situation where their mental is awakened, where their focus and their social arena is awakened. They need something to look forward to every day, and quite frankly, I think some of the parents need that, need it. It's the worst situation in the world, but I think that everybody up here is trying to put what's best for our students first. Students, students need to be our top priority at this time. Hopefully, I don't know how we're gonna dress it up, what we're gonna call it, but we're gonna have an extended school year of some kind in the summer. We've got to, whatever we name it, doesn't make any difference, whatever gets us the resources, because we cannot just stop. And hopefully, whatever we do can lead into that summer school success. I think one of the turning points for me as a principal, unsolicited, I've also visited the schools, said to me, it's real simple, I can't teach them if they're not in school. So, I hope that whatever we do tonight will not alienate, I'm sure it will, but we are voting with a conviction, and we're voting with an overload of knowledge, which is good. And everyone here needs to be respected for their vote, regardless of how they vote, of what we were elected to do. I love everybody up here genuinely, and if they disagree with me, then that's their right, and vice versa.
Mr. McManus, you're at four minutes and 30 seconds.
I've said enough, thank you.
Oh, is that it? All right, thank you. I'll add my comments. I know, I own the fact that I have taken this room on a roller coaster. Back in December, I voted for Plan A. I voted for Plan A because I believe it's what's best for kids, for their mental and emotional health. When numbers spiked over the holiday, I couldn't in my conscience come back and put them into school, and I'm sorry for that. I know that you all feel jerked around, I know you feel like you have been on just an emotional roller coaster, and so have your children, and for that, I'm sorry. What makes this so hard is it impacts every single person in this room and every single person in our system, and their extended families. We are facing something we have never experienced before, and the fact of the matter is, there is no right answer, and I've said that for a year. We're coming up on a year of this, and it has disrupted the lives of every single person in this community and around the world. And it's hard, and it's painful, and like what everybody else here has said, I've read every single email, and I do write back to the ones that call me mean names, and, and I appreciate your passion. I get it, you're frustrated, you're angry, some of you are scared. This is such a tough place to be, and I wouldn't wish this seat on anybody, but it is our role as the governance team of this district to make the decisions that are best for our children. I am doing a conference this week for my real job, my, my regular job, and I was lucky enough to hear from a positive psychologist, positive psychology expert, and one of the things that he shared was that social connection is the greatest predictor of happiness. And that's stuck with me, because social connection is what we don't have right now. Our kids are not getting it. It doesn't come through the tablet as much as we want it to, it's not. I value our teachers, I value all of our educators, I appreciate the work that you do, and I have to put the kids first, and I... I will be supporting a transition to Plan A this evening.
Well, can I, can I, can I say something else? Because this is actually from other board members, too. Last night, for the first time since last summer, because we went through a lot of things last summer, I heard about a great proposal, and I actually have talked to Eddie about it, I've talked to other board members about it, about doing half-days in a split schedule, one group in the morning and one the afternoon. That way, you can literally have kids in school every day, and you can also have the distancing and the safety measures in place. Now, this is the first you've heard of this since last summer, but I did talk to Eddie, it's doable with the buses, he can give more information on that. It would have the kids in school every day with their social, emotional needs, and be able to provide the teachers with the safety measures that they need. Now, this was sudden, I would've brought it up sooner, and I was, you said to tell how I felt, and I was doing that first. But listening to everybody, you're all torn the same way I am, and the kids do need their social, emotional needs met, we absolutely know that. And this is a good compromise because... And this is a good compromise because the teachers are scared. We're going to lose good teachers if this keeps up. We already are.
Ms. Justice, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Mr. Anderson, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't you look at a half and half option over the summer when you were initially looking at Plan B options? Can you share what was decided with that? Or am I off base? I thought that was thrown out there at some point.
As I told Ms. Justice today, I think logistically, it could work as long as, you know, the bus routes didn't interfere with our secondary routes. I think the challenge would be in staffing. You know, we have a hard time staffing our routes now. The day would be extended for our bus drivers, our custodians, our teachers, all of our staff, you know, to go to two shifts. And that would be, that's the challenge. Logistically, I mean, you know, you schedule it where the times don't conflict and, you know, it makes, it makes sense. Implementing it is a different story.
Thank you. Turning that up. Dr. Faust, what is your recommendation to the board as superintendent? What do you believe our district is prepared to do?
So I'd like to recommend that we begin our Plan A on March 8th, with our students going Monday through Friday for grades pre-K through 5.
Thank you very much. You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
Question. Is there any way we can even give the teachers a remote Wednesday or not? I know some people have asked for that.
If we do, it should be a part of it, I believe.
Would you like to open the floor? Is it a discussion?
Should we second, should we make second the motion?
What, if we could?
I'll make the motion to what Dr. Faust said.
Motion to recommend starting Plan A, March 8th, for the final nine weeks. Ms. Craybill, is the motion, is there a second? And then we'll go to discussion.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wildebohr. All right, discussion.
I'll say, are we entertaining anything like that? I know, I know it's important to teachers to have at least a day that they can clean and plan. And I mean, if they're going to A.
So just, this is my, I mean, I do want that for them. And I'll obviously support the recommendation of Plan A. I personally would like to go a week earlier. 357 days. It would be 357 days from our first case in New Hanover County on 3/19 until our students get back full-time. I personally couldn't in good conscience add another day missed for the week. I know how tired teachers are. I really do. Hopefully, we have some, some calendar news for them in March. We really tried to put together, a very good academic calendar for the following year. And I know how tired they are. I really do. But I just couldn't in good conscience support doing that at this time.
March the 8th, if you, in case you're not familiar, March the 8th is the beginning, the first day of the fourth nine weeks.
And that, in my opinion, that would give teachers a chance to wrap up their instruction, do their grades, get them submitted. And when they come in, they're ready. Rather than trying to, and that's the only reason that I would support, not the only reason, that's basically.
And it would probably give us another, it would give us two potential weeks for vaccination. And I do understand, I do understand that. Again, this is not teachers versus students. I do understand that.
If I could share just a couple of things. Number one, you know, the Plan 1A was, was actually my, I put it together, I guess it was somebody else that put it together before. But, you know, that was the half-day thing. And I did speak, and like I said, I've been to, and a couple of elementary schools I haven't been to, I do apologize you're on my list to do. But I have heard from a lot of folks, principals and other teachers, that they would like to see that Wednesday off. So I'm just going to throw that out. I don't want to muddy the waters. But I also have spoken to a lot of folks and they've said that that is a great tool for them. So. But I also understand, you know, we're way, we're way, way, way behind academically in our students. So. I just see both sides of the equation. So I'm not going to waters again, but I apologize for that.
I, March 8th is logical if you're going to do this. I would like to pursue findings, putting or looking at a plan for the possible half-days. We don't know what's going to happen by March 8th. There is still the variant out there. And that is a consideration. The numbers have just gone down a little, but we just don't know. So, I mean, we can always call another meeting, but at least stay in Plan B until March the 8th so we can hopefully get those vaccines. But I would like to see some kind of information, more information, more information as far as the possible half-days in case things do continue not to, you know, up high as far as the numbers go, so that we wouldn't be able to meet the kids' social, emotional needs because that is important.
Okay. Is there any other discussion about the Wednesday? Is there a need to? Yes.
So we can't actually not go to school on a Wednesday because we would lose an instructional day. And we have to, by law, have them in school to do work. So right now, Wednesday, they are remote. So we can't do it just for a planning day. Teachers will not lose their planning throughout the course. It goes back to normal where they would have to, we have to give them their 45 minutes of planning because we have to. So it's not that teachers won't lose their planning, that they'll lose their planning. They'll get their planning. It just goes back into a normal setting. But we can't call a day, a day without school, an instructional day. Although we have to make up that time. If we, if that were the route that you were taking, you'd have to extend the school year in order to increase that, those instructional terms.
Aren't we under the same time? Like if you added 30 minutes, you know, on a day, then we can make it? Because we've done that before with hurricane stuff.
Well, you'd have to count your instructional days. If you were to take a Wednesday away, every Wednesday would be, you have to do a six, six and a half, what's six and a half hour day, times, let's say, times nine. So we say, let's say seven times nine because it's easier for me to figure out. And you have to add those hours back in through the day, which would then increase. And we are moving then outside of our instructional day, which could cause some issues with contracts.
Okay. What about half-days? Like we take half-days all the time on Fridays, you know, so why couldn't we have a half-day on a Wednesday?
I'm not familiar with that. Let's take a half-day on Fridays.
Well, our early college high schools do. And we, oftentimes, we have PD on Fridays and your teachers do. And so.
So with the current calendar, we actually have moved away from half-days except at our year-round schools. Half-days were originally placed in the calendar to provide for additional opportunities for professional development. But from a principal's perspective, with the half-day, you end up spending the majority of your day trying to feed children. And you run through a very abbreviated instructional schedule. So there really is not the same level of benefit or opportunity for instruction that you would have in a full day. Because again, all those things that are required, such as children having recess or children being able to go to the cafeteria, you have to do those things during the half-day. And you only have, again, half the schedule to be able to do it. So from an instructional perspective, or I think that would end up being more of a disconnected day for students than it one that would be coherent and aligned with our instructional plan.
So would that then apply to this half-day proposal that Ms. Justice was making? We would only be going half-day?
So again, from, from the instructional side of the table, I would really have concerns about that. And we haven't had that conversation.
Can I just, I mean, so you're thinking about a six and a half hour day. How long are they going to be on the bus actually? How, you've got, anytime a child comes to school, they've got to feed them. So you've got to take out that time. So technically, you may be in school for literally two hours because you've got to feed breakfast, lunch. You've got to do those types of things. I don't know how that would work.
No, I understand.
It is working in other districts. They're putting, they're feeding the kids literally on the bus and they have them eat when they first, so there, I mean, but that's not, that's sort of separate from this fourth, the Wednesday that we're talking about now. Does anyone know how Pender County is doing that? Because that's what they're doing right now.
They're calling it a remote day.
Well, that's what I want to hear. Yeah.
But again, these ideas, and again, I know we're all trying to find the perfect solution and accommodate everybody. But these ideas have real-world implications. When you say nine half-days, when you say, "Hey, we never talked about this publicly before, but we're going to do four hours and four hours. Good luck." I mean, think about how parents are going to manage to get their kids back and forth to school. They have real-world implications. It's not just a good idea.
Yeah, I know what you're saying. But I just wanted to ask her how Pender is doing it.
Well, and I've had conversations with the instructional folks at Pender County, my counterpart in my role. And based on our discussion that day at the time, their preference actually was four or five-day week. It just, how they started. And again, a lot of times how you start is how you end up finishing. But they expressed lessons learned along the way, that their preference was four or five-day week. So if they had to do it again, I think they would have transitioned to that.
And I know a lot of it was because we didn't know a lot about the virus. And at the time, they thought they had to heavy-duty clean the schools. And at this point, we know it's not staying on surfaces. It's an airborne virus. So I can see why at this point that, you know, if they had started now, that would have probably been a, I'm just asking.
I have a question for Dr. Faust. Do you have the protocols in place for when whole schools will have to quarantine or whole classrooms have to quarantine? I know Brunswick County shuts schools down. So I didn't know. Do you have that? Because I've been told that they just get packets sent home. And I feel like that's loss of learning too.
So depending on the situation, they would go, we would go to, if a school had to do that, we'd go to Plan C for the 10 days. And so then it would have to be remote.
And that's going to be 10 days? Like is that, is you going to just do classrooms or are you going to do?
I'm sorry.
I'm saying, are you just going to do like quarantine just whole classrooms or are you going to do a whole school? Is it just going to depend on clusters?
It would really depend if it was a cluster, what we would have to look into. And then, of course, you know, following the guidance of the Health Department.
And y'all are prepared for that?
Yes.
And what you're going to do with kids for learning purposes?
Yes. Even in, even in Plan B, if there were, if it were, got to a point, we would have to go to Plan C.
So you just send packets on, but there won't be any remote instruction?
Well, there would be. We would. Because the kids will take, still have their laptops or iPads.
But the teachers out too though. Is that, I've just been told that they, when kids are out or in quarantine or teachers, they don't do a remote.
So I would say it depends. I don't know anything about a packet. If they would still be able to, if a teacher's quarantined, let's say for that cluster, they would still be able to do remote learning.
I just think if we're going to do that, we should communicate with the public truly and what the protocols are going to be for whatever scenario happens in a Plan A. Like they have to go to Plan C for like two weeks or whatever.
Yes.
Isn't March 5th a teacher work day too? So that we have just another extra day to, to make that transition?
Yes. Mr. McManus, yes?
Would it be, you may have already thought about this, but once the 24th arrives, could the, I'm not sure what the dismissal time is for middle school and after instruction, but they could leave if, in order, if they get a portal, that extra time to get a shot? For one who's had to go online and do it, it's tough.
Oh, yeah. Trying to get the shot.
Maybe we can wait till Carla Turner just gives us a, and Julie, you know, work out what we're.
There's a time that they don't leave till a certain time. But if they could leave earlier, after they finish the instruction, the buses, all the safety pack, if they could, that would give them a little extra time.
I'm sure with the partnership that we have with the Health Department, that they'll be able to come up with an adequate vaccine schedule for the educators. So. Okay, there is a motion and a second on the table for pre-K through 5 to transition to Plan A on March 8th. Ms. Bowie, could you please call the roll for this one?
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Bullier?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
No.
Ms. Craybill?
Aye.
Mr. McManus?
Aye.
Ms. Walker?
No.
And Mr. Wildebohr?
Aye.
Motion passes five to two. The final item on our agenda is adjournment. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
All right. Fastest motion of the night. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.